This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 20th, 2021, and it's 6:00 PM, and I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sandy, you want to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchardski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dmitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Sandy. And as we started almost a year ago now, I'd like to introduce our department heads and staff that are participating in tonight's event. We have, to my left, Aaron Jensen, our city administrator. Kathy's not here. Peg Billington, our librarian, librarian, sorry, and Tom Hart, our city attorney, Justin Barron's director of Public Works, Andrew Whitman, Parks and Rec Director, Chief Brian Hosele, Chief of the Police, and Josh, of course, Warner is our IT individual, and he's in the back, of course. And then we have Sandy Stibbs, our city clerk. And then also, virtually, we have Jeff Sanders with us tonight, and you can see him up on the screen right there, our zoning coordinator. All right, anything else there? Consent agenda. Sandy says there's no additions to that tonight. We vote on a consent agenda. We vote on all of the items in the consent agenda at one time unless council member or staff would like to see one of those items moved to the regular agenda where we would deal with that on an individual basis. Anybody that would like to see an item moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, we would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, under the regular agenda, again, the agenda that you received in your packet is the agenda that we're going to follow tonight, so we would just formally need a motion to approve that agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Chestnut, to approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, under non-agenda items and announcements, number seven, we have public input. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to give public input on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less.
Yeah, sorry. My name's Ken Krupzey.
Ken, you can just move right by Tom there and then use that one if you would. Appreciate it if you could use the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Not a real big deal, but I understand the city. First of all, thank you all for all the improvements you're doing. You're doing a great job. Well, we all appreciate it. I'm at 212 Main Street, and I guess my objection, I guess, I don't really know what it is, but you've got, I'm a little confused. So, and I just figured I'd ask you guys what to do. I know you've got a grant going on for half money, and there was improvements done in the alleyway, and it brought some pictures of what were done. But I also have some busted up concrete that I think was kind of done from the improvement. So I can either, I guess I'd like the city to pay for it and fix the concrete back there, or if not, I'll put it into the grant money, either way. So I don't know what to do with it from here.
Justin, can, have you talked to Justin about it already?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and do you know anything about it, Justin?
Yeah, we met in the back alley, and we discussed, but I guess I was under the standing he was going to seek the grant funding. So I didn't know there was a dispute, per se.
Right, it's not a real big deal, so, but I guess I think that, you know, the people who did it reliable, but, I mean, I'm not going to make a big deal about it.
Okay.
Because the grant money was really nice, too. Thank you for doing that, too.
Yeah.
So.
So what project were they working on that they broke the?
When they tarred, when they put the asphalt in, in the bag there, I think that heavy equipment just cracked up the concrete and busted it up, and it's just, it looks really bad, and just like to get it fixed, make it look nice.
Yeah, if you want to just give that information to Justin, and why don't we talk at our meeting tomorrow, or Thursday, about that, and we'll get back to you on that.
Thank you very much.
Don't touch base.
Thanks, all for your good, hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
You go that way, and I'll.
All right.
Okay, anybody else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? All right, let's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lori.
This is public, right?
It is.
Okay, so I, one of the big questions today, I think it was just answered, but I think I'd like Justin to answer the question of who's going to water and care for all those flowers? And is it every year that that contract that was paid for is in effect, or is it just this year it was that amount?
Actually, I think that, I guess you can go ahead and answer it, but it really is.
Yeah, that was the question of the day.
Yeah, go ahead.
You want to take it?
I'll take it.
Okay, good, thank you.
So those flowers that you see out there were done by Bonnie's Bloomers. There was three quotes gotten, all local companies. As far as the maintenance of it, that was part of the, it's part of the overall project money, and it is, the quotes that were gotten were for the rest of this year and next year, next summer. Every time that we do the flowers, we would have a separate bolt, we'd get the three quotes, so people would have different shots at it each year. Actually, the one that did end up getting it is the only one that could provide watering.
Aaron, can you use the microphone?
I'm sorry, it was the only one that could provide watering service to it, so that's how that works. Part of the overall Main Street project budget is how these years will be paid for. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, anything else, public input wise? All right, let's go on to department ed reports. I have on here that Marzie Reynolds was going to be here, so I guess we'll wait and do her near the end or when she shows up. So Kathy's not here tonight, Peg, so if you could start, that would be great.
Thank you. Well, as you know, and I've been talking about, we are, we have a goal of reading 10,000 books this summer. We're at 49%, within about 63 books of getting halfway mark. So continue to read, continue to log those books with your grandchildren, your children, and let's get, make sure we reach that goal of 10,000. Our programs in the parks have been very successful. We're reaching a different audience in the park than we have at the library before, and we're looking forward to next year when we can see people at the library and in the parks. We're very grateful to the Park and Rec Department for allowing us to use those park shelters. It's been a great way to see people outside this summer. So lots of good things that have happened as a result of our learning in the pandemic. Not saying the pandemic was good, but we have had lots of good learning. We are still providing virtual storytime that works for families who simply can't make it at the time when it's going to be held at the library. So we'll continue to do those virtual programs as well. We are planning to allow other groups to use our meeting rooms in this fall, and we're very busy planning programming that will allow people to come back into the library for programming purposes, and those people who use our meeting rooms for other purposes as well. So we're excited about those changes that are coming forward, and please help us reach that goal of 10,000 books. Thank you.
Thank you. Peg, anybody have any questions or comments for Peg? All right, Public Works, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor. My memo starts on page four of the packet, goes on to five. Wastewater side, we're having some issues out at the Foxfire lift station. It's mostly due to what's being sent down the drain. So we crafted up a letter and sent it out, you'll get one, too, in the mail to all the residents out there and also a couple businesses.
So blame on me now?
It is, it is not meant to be punitive. It's just educational, some dos and don'ts of how to have a healthy drain. We put that stuff in our newsletter almost monthly, but here, we were having so many issues on that one lift station that we did a directed mailing to try and see what's going on, unless you know something.
I don't.
Okay.
You could ask Terry, though. She's here tonight, too.
I didn't know I was going to make, get so much results tonight. Oh, two off the list. Streetside, the big thing is Main Street. We had a week off, so we, stage one is done and open. Stage two, I confirmed today, will start July 26th. We'll start advertising that, get that out in our weekly emails and on Facebook and whatnot. The flowerpots are out there. They look great. Now, that is the entirety of the flowerpots for the whole project. They're kind of stuffed up on North Main right now because we wanted a pop of color. When stage two gets done, we'll move them. So it'll get thinned out a little bit. We have the benches coming probably next week, and for those who don't know about those benches, those were donated by the Opaquia Foundry. They casted them, they got the engineered wood, and they put them together, and they're going to deliver them, and two of our street guys will help set them out. We're going to set them out there. We're not going to bolt them down right away because we're going to kind of see how they feel and look, and we'll have, well, with all the flowerpots, and we'll be able to move things around and make it fit right. Waterside, we've, we were getting the lead out. 16 total services have been replaced this year. Most of them were on Main Street. We have one more that was done across town. We've got another one coming near the downtown area. All, I think, but one qualified for 100% grant, and the qualification with that is if it's a residence, a single-family residence, or if there is any kind of residential. So downtown, most of those qualify because of the upstairs apartments. So that is huge, that that is grant funding that the city does not even touch or get. It goes directly to those private property owners. We did some improvements on West Badger Street while work was going on on North Main. We eliminated about 300 feet of 4-inch water main. We just had a second line there, and we're supposed to get rid of this 4-inch main. It's too small. There's concerns with the DNR, so we took, we took the opportunity with all the construction going on and eliminated that. Russ submitted his tree grant to ATC, and I have a little bit of a typo. Typically, in the past, we get about 1,200 to 1,500. This year, he's asking for 3,000. We have received that grant every single time Russ has put in, so I think that's seven years running now. Well, last year was seven years. We have two big anniversary numbers. Eric Kins, our water operator, is 26 years early in July, and then Roger Hanson, also in early in July, had 34 years at the city, and probably going to, well, maybe another 34. Maybe not.
Let's hope so. Thanks, Justin. Any questions or comments for Justin? That's why I stopped you, Lori. I was thinking you could ask the question there, but yeah, that's fine.
People just wanted to know.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you know when the citywide request proposal, garbage proposal will be?
I'm working on that right now. I plan on getting that out and advertised in August. So I've got, I accelerated my schedule to try and get that information sooner. The reason why is because I did reach out to three of the haulers, the bigger names that you hear around here, and they all appreciated in early notification because of the current accounts that were in the city. If they were notified early enough, they would close those accounts, they would come round up all the bins with no additional charge. So I just thought, well, hey, let's, we got to get this thing going sooner, because that was a concern of mine, and I know of many citizens of like, well, if you make me change, is my hauler, you know, my account, am I going to charge? So, so yeah, I'm going to get that together sooner than I anticipated. So August is the answer.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's go to Andrew, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor, council member, members, sorry. Couple things in the parks we're working on. If you remember, I came and sought approval to take the bandstand down. I have gotten through all the quote-unquote red tape, and am just waiting to hear from folks when that day will come. So they said they let me know about a day or two ahead of time, got through all the DNR stuff, all the permitting and that kind of stuff. So you'll see that, and I will let you know when that happens at some point as well. If you remember even further back, we're kind of like the police department. I think he'll talk about vehicles today. We ordered a UTV quite a few months ago. The actual UTV came in, but we're still waiting for half the tires and a few other little things. So it's been kind of a mess. So hopefully, we get to use that at some point this year. If not, we'll break it out next year.
So do we have like four half tires or just two tires?
We have the back two tires I saw in an email today, and not the front two tires. So that's where we're at on that. So we're hoping to use that this year, but it's not looking too great on that. We did update some videos and tours now on our website, thanks to Josh. So we had to redo the tour and the virtual tour and the video of Riverside Park after we redid that last year. If you remember, we did that over the winter. So we got all that up and updated, so people who are interested in renting our parks, which has been very busy this year, can look at a video, and it describes everything, kind of shows an overhead and through video, and then they can take a virtual tour as well, kind of like at our rec center, where you can go from spot to spot to spot. So those are up and going. Lake management plan should be done at some point this year. We have another meeting coming up on July 26th for the planning committee. I would think sometime towards the fall, we'll see a draft of that, and then I'll be bringing that to you as well. We had some divers out today in Shadow Lake, if you happen to notice that, doing some AIS work for us through Golden Sands as well. So lots of stuff going on in our lakes. Recreation, swimming session two started, very busy. Over 200 kids are participating in that. Three Sport is completely full. Art in the Park is bigger than last year. That's something we started last year. So overall, with the six days, it's about 60 kids participating. And then Disc Golf, which is something that we started last year as well because of COVID. So to go on Peg's point of, you know, some of the things that we learned and tried are things that we do now because of COVID-19. So we have some kids in that as well. Senior Center, you'll see some work this week on Serenity Park. There's going to be a retaining wall in front of the swing and the brick patio that they put in earlier this year, so that'll look, make that even look nicer. They've really taken a lot of pride in that park and on a lot of things with their own fundraising money, and it's really looking nice down there. Rocksteady Boxing, which I've talked about a lot, second session has started. We have not had to turn anybody away, but some of the good things is I learned today that there's people all the way from Wisconsin Rapids in the class, people asking and signing up from Appleton and Stevens Point. So people know about it. They're getting recommendations from doctors to people to come check it out. So that's really starting to take off, and I think that's really going to add, and, well, it adds to our senior center, but it just helps with the marketing and getting the word out there about the senior center as well. So they have a couple fundraisers coming up. One I'll talk about a little bit later, as it's November 19th that they're working on, but they do have one next Friday. Dave, do you remember the name? Grandma's Lemonade and Grandpa's. Grandpa's Grill, something like that. Sorry, I was paying attention this morning. So that'll be next weekend. They're selling lemonade and food in front of the rec center, so if you are hungry or thirsty and want to stop by, definitely come on over and purchase some of that and help the senior center out. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Any questions or comments, Andrew? All right, let's go to Chief Hosele.
Thank you. I don't have a report because we did not get together as a commission this month. We just had to go over the expense report and the agenda from last month, so we took a month off, so that's why there's not a report in. But I can tell you, 4th of July for our department was a success. We didn't have any problems whatsoever. We had very few complaints on that day, so that was, that was nice for us to have. Everybody had a lot of positive comments about the parade, and it went really well. Andrew kind of hit a little bit in regards to our squad that we've had for a few months. We're still waiting for a piece of equipment that's being made. We're being told, like for squads, there might be six to nine months out before we can get other ones. So it just continues to be a backlog of those, so we'll be working on it very soon with the budget year coming up. The other thing I wanted to update you on is our body cameras that we have, that we did a capital project a few years ago. We're at the point now where we're able to upgrade those, and that's at no additional cost to us. So at the two and a half year mark, we're getting brand-new cameras with the software technology and all the bells and whistles on it. So it's kind of nice to get at two and a half years, and we haven't had any problems whatsoever with our Axe on Cameras, so really happy that we went with that company. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on is you'll see officers, if you haven't, doing more extra patrols in the downtown area. We've been doing this for a couple weeks with the openings and closings of the new streets. We have some different stop signs that are on Main Street, and we understand that people may go through them. We're going to be very visible, and hopefully, everything, you know, nobody gets into an accident or anything like that. But if you're wondering why there's a lot of squads on Main Street, that's why. We just want to make sure that there's always a smooth transition, because we've been doing it this way for over, I know I've been here 27, 28 years, North Main Street. I don't think ever had a stop sign on it, ever. So just, you know, if the people are, that are here and listening, just please be careful on Main Street at this time, and just pay attention to the signs, because things are going to continue to change in the downtown area. So that's all that I have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions? Go ahead, Paul.
With there not being any lighting on North Main, would it be helpful to have some sort of red flashing solar lights or something like that on those signs?
I haven't been down there at nighttime.
Well, it's not very bright.
No, it's not.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, with stop signs, maybe having.
You got your lights on, should stand, the stop sign should stand out.
Well, that wasn't his question, though.
A flashing sign with a solar panel is probably two grand.
We don't have any of those in stock, or the colony doesn't have any to lend us?
So you're looking, we're looking to increase visibility of the new stop signs.
It would be a good suggestion, I would think, and it doesn't have to be a solar panel flashing. It could be a battery-operated something that is replaced, just because those are, I assume, are rather temporary.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. We'll have to look into some options.
I'll work on that with Justin, to see if we can find something that's out there that's reasonable.
Wouldn't have to be much, just something red blinking light.
All right, anybody else have anything for Chief? All right, Josh, IT.
Probably one of the bigger things I'm assisting with is we're working on the implementation of our new licensing and permitting software. We've been getting together as a staff on a weekly basis to make progress on that, and the company we're working with anticipates end of August moving into the implementation phase, and I think the goal is to kick off next year with it. I think it'll be a nice improvement on workflow once we have it implemented, and we'll allow a lot of internal processes on getting permits and licenses issued quicker and more efficiently. Working on a project, we're going to put out a calendar next year to our residents and businesses, and I think you've kind of heard about that. They've been working on that. There's a photo contest we did to solicit pictures and had a lot of neat ones come in. You should have all received an email how to go through those and pick the ones you like, and help pick out what we do with the first calendar. And then community media side of things, been continuing regular video updates on Facebook and our other outlets on Main Street and other things going on, and we're still assisting Winchester this summer with their virtual series, and tested out the upgrades in the library meeting rooms last night, and kind of got a feel for a few tweaks that have to be made there, and that's kind of it. Just a lot of regular data, odds and ends going on with IT right now.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions or comments for Josh?
I enjoyed the pictures that were put up. I wondered, when I, I kind of thought, oh, maybe if I click on it, it'll get bigger. I can see it in more detail.
Yeah, I noticed that today, that they, I thought they were going to get bigger. So if that's an issue, let me know, and I'll post them somewhere else where you can see them a little bit bigger. I don't know.
There were, there were so many. I don't, I don't know if it's an issue for anyone else, but when I looked at it, I thought, oh, it'd be nice if I could see it larger.
I could throw them somewhere else where they're easier to see if that would be helpful. Yeah, I'll just throw them somewhere where you kind of, yeah. I was trying to find a way to do a nice, easy-to-use pole with them, and I guess didn't realize they weren't going to get bigger, so.
It is easy to see them all. It's just I was hopeful that I could.
Yeah, I'll throw them on a web, I'll throw them on a webpage somewhere where you can see the bigger version, too. It's a, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? I guess not, he's leaving. All right, let's go to city clerk, Sandy.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. My report is on page 15 and 16. Barb and I were trained on the new voting machines. We spent a morning in Wyawiga, and I'd like to thank Russ Montgomery. He was very helpful in taking his truck over and helping us haul them home and deliver them to City Hall. Also, Josh mentioned, my office has been working with the Community Development Department and Josh for our new licensing and permitting software, so we've been spending a couple hours in the morning on a Tuesday working on those. And then also, June is busy license renewal time for me for the alcohol licenses, and the most, they all expire on June 30th. So if you notice my license count in the packet, you'll see that we had a busy month, and that's it.
Thanks, Andy. Any comments, questions? All right, let's go to Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on page 17 of your packet. First, I'll touch, I won't touch on all these, but on some highlights. Community and Economic Development Staffing, as everyone likely knows, we've been going through the process to hire a new Community and Economic Development Director. We do have second-round interviews scheduled for July 26th and 27th, next Monday and Tuesday. I hope to have a good candidate to bring to council sometime shortly after that. So we're going to involve our court interview team, which has been Alan, myself, Mayor Smith, and then the deputy director from the City of Nina for their Community and Economic Development Department. And then we're also going to have a staff panel as a part of that second round, and then also a department head, kind of more of an informal department head session. So we hope to get a really good, good look at who we're, who we may be working with. Let's see, let's go to, oh, I just lost my spot. So I'll touch base on the Room Tax District Commission meeting. The first meeting was actually this past week, July 13th, held at the Chamber of Commerce. Right now, we're just working through some questions. So there's some logistical questions on how do we administer the room tax for some of the members in the commission. It's brand-new to them, collecting room tax, so Dayton and Farmington. And we actually, state statutes are a little goofy. We only had three of our representatives there. One representative was absent, and then the state statute says, once a chairperson is appointed, then that person appoints the hotel and vacation rental reps. So that will be done at the August 25th meeting, and that'll be the first time having our full board. So right now, a lot of logistical cleanup. So right now, a lot of logistical cleanup, housekeeping. I can tell you right now, there is a couple of suggestions to amend the agreement that council has approved along with all the other townships. Really nothing substantial, just probably something to make it cleaner and more easily understandable. So you may be seeing that sometime soon and I'll walk you through that. Real one-on-one training, this is a training that myself, Mayor Smith, Scott Pritchardski, Mary Fair. I was able to attend one of the nights. It was a two-night training, virtual, put on by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities in partnership with the National League of Cities. And it was on race equity, leadership, and all of those topics. Everything from historical context to federal policies to discussions about local actions. So that was something that was a good training to go through. Want to thank all the elected officials who were able to make that time. And it was a time commitment. It was three hours each of those nights. So. City Hall software, I won't mention that. Josh already kind of gave an update, but our staff's working pretty diligently on that, staying on the timelines provided to them. Cultural plan update, working with actually Marcy, who's in the crowd, and some other representatives from the Arts and Culture Network on an event that's going to take place on September 23rd. And all council members can expect to see an invite very soon on that. It is actually to kind of re-up our, the cultural plan. That was an award-winning plan that was actually from 2018 to 2021. It's already time to be updated. So we'll be, myself and Greg Gromen, our grant writer, will be working with the Arts and Culture Network for that. That will be at Danes Hall on the evening of the 23rd. Main Street Transition and Celebration, we are, Justin's talked a lot about the logistics and the Main Street transition and how that's working. But we are working also as a staff group to help plan this October 29th event that will celebrate the Main Street opening, working with the Parks and Rec Department, who's going to transition their Halloween event that happens every year. So we'll have kind of a built-in crowd for that. I think they usually get anywhere from 300 to 450 people at that event. And then we're also working with Jim Miller, who's going to bring his pumpkin display downtown around City Hall. They get anywhere from, he gets anywhere from 7,000 to 10,000 visitors annually at that display on Golkey Road. So that will be pretty neat to have those people visiting our downtown. And then proposed County Wetland Mitigation Bank. We were contacted by Casey Byersdorf, County Highway Commissioner. The county is looking to do a wetland mitigation bank, two and a half miles, basically due east of our airport. There is a requirement that anything, any mitigation bank within five miles has to have approval from the airport. We've been working with the BOA reps, making sure that it's not creating any more of a dangerous situation by attracting migratory birds and so on and so forth. Their environmental rep is working on that right now and they will be getting back to us within the next week so we can continue to communicate with the county on that, make sure we're not putting our airport in a worse spot from a safety standpoint. Those are my notable meetings for the month. The only other two things I'll touch base on is City Hall. As many people know, actually had a, we had to evacuate because of a gas leak a couple of weeks ago. We went through, reviewed our evacuation policy as a department head team this morning. We'll continue to kind of amend that. But I would say that staff did a really, really nice job in getting everyone out at the library side and the City Hall side. And obviously, our police department and fire department did a nice job. And what ended up being a short period that we had to be gone, but I thought everyone did well. And then the, I do want to talk about a couple of things. I've been receiving questions on this lately, the old laundromat that's being tore down. There has been a raise permit issued. This is the laundromat that's across from Dunkin' Donuts. That is, you've probably seen that slowly incrementally coming down. And there's been a little bit of a pause over the last week or so. They're waiting for some people to come get the equipment that's still left in there before they can continue. We have gotten some calls and that's a potential dangerous situation with it being left in the state that it is. So our building inspectors have been working with them and contacting the property owners in the last two days. And that will move sooner than later. There's actually also a house fire on Holbeck Street that happened over a month ago. And we have been working with the property owner to get that completely cleaned up as there's still some debris there. So Mayor, that's all I have.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions, comments for Paul? Go ahead.
For your Room Tax District Commission, I assume that the hospitality represented would probably be coming from one of the major hotels. Are there any plans for any input from vacation rental owners? Because that really is two distinct things.
Yeah, so right now, there have been two identified. One is, you're right, from a major hotel within the city. And then the other is, represents more of the Airbnb, VRBO.
Oh, okay.
Person.
Thank you.
Good question. All right, anybody else? Okay, I have a question for you, Marcy. You're on the, under the regular agenda of new business, but do you also want to give an update on the arts first? Want to do that first? Not, not just the project that's on the agenda, but just to talk about what's going on?
Okay, there's a lot going on. I actually have a handout for you guys. Do you want me to like give it to Mary and pass it around?
Sure.
Mayor, while they're handing that out, if I could interject just a second. The last time we met, we went on the tour. And I wanted to say thank you to everybody who organized the tour and hosted us. Justin, your colleagues did a great job as well as everybody else that was there. And also to say thank you to all the department heads that met with me while we were getting introduced to each other. I know that was new to all of you, but it was, it was a good thing for me. So thank you and thanks again for the tour. You guys did a phenomenal job. Josh, you too. That was interesting to, to see inside the water tower and your equipment.
Thank you.
So thanks again. Okay, Marcy, sorry to cut you off.
That's okay. That's okay. Okay, I'm Marcy Reynolds. I'm from the Wapaka Community Arts Board. And so Mayor Smith, you want me to do the Arts and Culture Network Arts Report? Is that what you're asking me to do? Okay, perfect. So thanks a lot to all of you for once again allowing us to come and report on what's happening in the arts. We're always happy to do that. This is the Arts Boards Month. So I just wanted to kind of lead off with the Arts Network. What we're working on right now specifically is that Arts Summit that Aaron talked about that's set up for September and we'll be working with Aaron. He's really spearheading it and doing a really great job. And the purpose of it is to bring the right people to the table to set new goals for the next three years for the Arts and Culture in Wapaka. So that'll be happening at the Danes Hall. And then as far as the Arts Board, I guess I just, first of all, wanted to thank all of you for making it really, really easy for us to find an alternate site for Arts on the Square. We're really happy to be able to do it again this year. We missed last year and I think it was missed by everybody. And so we're excited to launch it again. It'll be the third weekend in August. I just handed out the save the date card to you guys. These are hot off the press. So I won't go through each and every event. You can kind of look at that yourself. But I would refer you to our website for the specific details. We've got a lot going on. It's post-COVID, so not really post-COVID. So we're following the CDC guidelines. Almost all of our events are outside. So we're feeling very confident that it's going to be very safe for the community. So just a few specific thank yous. Justin and Roger really helped us find this new site. We went through a lot of different ideas. And those of you who know Steve Lagkey, he had a lot of diagrams. But we did land with the rec center and we thank Andrew for allowing us to come on his space. And we are going to also be upgrading, I think temporarily, some electricity. And Justin and Roger really helped us with that so that we have enough juice for all of the food vendors and music stages. So that was great. They made it pretty painless for us to move over there temporarily. Andrew's also allowing us to use the old Health and Fitness Headquarters Building for our kid art camp and gallery and jazz stage. That's going to be happening that week. So thanks for that. We have a couple of groups working with us again. We try to collaborate as much as possible with this event. So we've got the Wapaka Canyon in between people doing the chalking again. We'll be doing our Wapaka Local Live outside. As the kids finish their chalking, we're going to be doing what we're calling an instrument padding zoo, which sounds kind of weird. But we have music teachers from our hub, which I'll talk about in a minute, who are going to be there playing instruments, letting kids play them. And that somehow is going to turn into the radio show. We haven't quite figured out the script yet. But that'll be a lot of fun. We'll do a sing-along. The kids will be able to play with the instruments. And the teachers are really up for it because of course that gets them more in the mood to take music lessons. So we've also got, the Historical Society is doing a food booth with us Friday and Saturday. And they're bringing their Historical Society banners that they created that are on site right now at the Historical Society at the Holly Center. They'll be bringing those over to the rec center and we have just tons of stuff going on. During Arts Week, because we couldn't be downtown and being downtown with Wapaka, with the Arts Festival really does positively impact the businesses. So we're sorry that we can't be down there. However, during Arts Week, we made a point of scheduling everything we could to be right downtown. And the biggest thing I think that we're doing is a thing called Scavenger Palooza. So that will be launched on the 15th, which is Sunday before the weekend of Arts on the Square. We'll be having an opening day and we'll be launching this giant scavenger hunt, which will take people downtown through the alleys. There'll be clues that they'll get. And they'll be going all throughout the alleys and the downtown area looking for specific public art things that have popped up in the last couple of years. And then they'll submit their, their cards at Arts on the Square and be eligible for a prize. So we've got a couple of other events downtown. We have a storytelling at the Danes Hall, a poetry reading at Aquamos, and a comedy show at Weasels. And we're going to be leading mural tours on Monday. So we'll be publishing, you know, how you can sign up to be, go on a walking tour. And we'll give people kind of like the background behind the different murals. I don't know how many people have been able to see them, but they're about 75% complete right now. We still have a couple artists that are still coming in to do them. They turned out way better than I expected them to. And some of them are really whimsical and some of them are really major. Some of them are tiny, but it's been a really great thing. The businesses have really embraced it. They're feeding the artists. And it's just been a really kind of a nice thing to offset the pain of what they've had to go through for the past couple of years. The poetry is in progress. We have our poetry committee that has some additional members working to do sidewalk poetry. And I don't know if anybody's seen that, but that is totally in progress. They're stamping or embedding it. There's a couple other things that will happen to make them more visible. Mary can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're going to be painting the letters and then staining the letters and sealing them. And then they'll really pop out of the sidewalk. So we haven't done a lot of huge promo on that because they're really in progress and they don't look as good as they're going to. So we don't really want people to go down and go, oh, this, this is terrible. So once that's all done, we'll be promoting that. Couple other things we've been up to with the Arts Board. We helped host a conference here in Wapaka for public art that was put on by Wisconsin State Arts Board and Arts Wisconsin. And there were people here from all over the state, from different cities, Kenosha and Green Bay. And we were one of the presenters and they were very impressed with Wapaka's scene with, you know, the Yubelong mural and Dort de Wilde's mural and the fact that the city is embracing the arts and allowing us to do all of this public art. So we, we had a lot of really great feedback from that. And that turned into a consult that the Arts Board is doing with the City of Antigo to get their stuff going kind of along the same vein. So we'll be meeting with the Antigo people about that. We have the Summer Nights concerts going on. We did have one of our concerts rained out last week. We've rescheduled it for this week and so that's happening this week. And last but not least, the Wapaka Community Arts Hub is another project that we started. And it's basically an arts school for kids. And it's going to be an after-school program come fall. Right now, we're doing art classes that are one week long. We're on our second one. The kids are totally engaged with, with the artists that we have working with them. We've currently got four music teachers. One is a guitar teacher, one is a drum and early piano. I myself am a piano up to intermediate. And then we have a retired band teacher that will be starting to work with Shayna Rodney to get kids individual attention onsite. The Methodist Church has donated the site to us. They're super supportive and they've been doing everything they can to make it work for us. So it's happening and we're really excited about it. So that's my report. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Marcy.
Thanks.
Stay right there, I think. Let's move on to new business then. We have a placemaker committee request to sponsor a recognition of an art piece that would be put on City Square and then also a plaque that would be put in the City Hall entryway. And that looks like it's a team of Terry and Terry Schultz and Marcy.
Yep, so we're here representing the Downtown Placemakers, which is actually a volunteer group that got together. It's business owners, property owners, some city staff, chamber staff, and organizations who wanted to support the Main Street project. And so we looked at raising funds to add some amenities to the downtown. So currently, we've raised, raised $69,000 to support three kind of major projects. One is the sidewalk poetry. One is to do the bike racks and the fix station. And the other is to do the street sounds, the sound system that will be in the downtown area. Our goal was to raise $55,000. We thought that's what it would take to pay for all of that. Obviously, we raised more, so it's, it's great. We're very happy about it. We had 52 donors. But part of the thing that we told the donors is that we would recognize them in the downtown area. And at the time, I think we had talked to Andrew and he was in agreement that that would probably work out. So tonight, we're here to ask for your help. We need to recognize seven of the major donors. And we all, as our committee, all agreed that it should be an art piece that would be located in the downtown. We're hoping that you'll agree that it can be on the City Square. And all of the donors, I shouldn't say all, anyone who gave $100 or more would be recognized in a plaque that we were hoping that you would allow us to hang in the City Hall entryway. So we've hired a local artist to create these projects and I'm going to let Marcy talk about the artist.
Okay. I don't know how many of you know of Studio 212. Has anyone seen, it's on Main Street? And the front of that building has this beautiful mosaic that's been in place for probably at least 15 years. It's weathered really well. It's beautifully done. And sometimes you kind of drive by and don't see it, but if you go and look at it, it's just this gorgeous piece of art. So the person that did that is the owner of Studio 212 and her name is Claudia Crumsey. And so we approached her and asked her if she could do some sort of mosaic design to commemorate the donors. And she was all over it. And so that's all I have to say about it, other than she's working. So, so it's turned into quite a deal and you can see the pictures up there. Is that, are you going to talk about the obelisks? Okay, I'm going to let Terry talk about it. But she is working with found objects. I think she's got a couple of things that have been dug out of the street to work as, work with her mosaic on. I think she's put in a request for any...
She's looking for anything that's historic.
Anything, yeah, that can be embedded. Right, any kind of antique stuff that can be embedded in these obelisks, so.
Yep. So we asked her as the artist to come up with her idea. And so she came up with the idea of, and you can see the picture, of three obelisks to be placed with the donors' names. They'll have a plaque at the bottom. But to actually create these, she needed some type of a form to put them on. So we connected with the Wapaka Foundry. This is actually their rendering. They've created the plans to create the actual metal base of the objects. And so they're going to be donating those to her to create those on. And once they're created, the thought is to place them or secure them to a piece, a large piece of stone, similar to the statue that is out in front of the library of the little girl reading. It would be similar to that, probably not quite as big of a piece of stone. The tallest one will actually be five foot six and the base would be 16 inches. The next one would be five feet, 14 and a half inch base. And the smallest one would be four feet, six inches with a 13-inch base. Obviously, the colors are not correct, but that gives you an idea what they would look like. They also have a metal... a, a metal cap at the top so that rain would shelter off of the mosaic. And as I said, the Foundry is willing to create those pieces and then Claudia can do her work on them. She's then willing to make us a, basically a frame to put around the other plaque that we would like to hang in City Hall and it will match the pieces that are outside. And that piece would be about 16 by 20. Not exact, but that's what we think that it would be. And so we're here tonight to ask you if you would be willing to allow us to set the, this piece out in front of City Hall. It would be south of the doors, probably about the third to the fifth window in, in that landscape that's up towards the building. The actual overhang, I actually measured it, is eight feet. So they would fit under there nicely. I think it wouldn't obstruct the windows at all because of the, they narrow as they go up. But we just think that that would be a wonderful place to put that. And then we would also ask if you would allow us to put the plaque inside the City Hall entryway, that will list all of the donors. So that's what we're here to ask you tonight. I'd be happy, or we'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you might have. I should also say that we would incur the cost. You might have to lay a piece of concrete in order to put the stone on so that it has a stable foundation. We would incur all of the cost of installing a piece of artwork.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I must, I might have missed it. So where did you envision these being located?
So if you're standing in front of City Hall, front of City Hall.
To the right.
To the right, up in that landscaping that's up towards the building.
Where those shrubs.
Lava rock and there's some shrubs in there. No, it would be on the City Hall side.
So the, the statue of the little girl reading is on the library side and then this one would be on the City Hall side. Not exactly mirrored symmetrically because we want it, we don't want it to be behind a pole. And when we looked, it's just a little bit off symmetrically.
This would be inside the sidewalk building.
Yeah, between the sidewalk and the building.
Nobody has to walk around. They wouldn't be walking behind anything like that.
Right. It's a fairly safe spot to put it so that nobody starts climbing on it or whatever.
Go ahead, Justin.
When will these be ready?
We are hoping by the end of October.
This year.
This year. It really depends on when the Foundry can get their supplies in order to make the bases. And then Claudia has to have enough time to, to do her magic.
So Erin, I, I assume, Justin, you two, that you've had discussion on this already? Or is this the first time you've seen it?
I have seen it. And this actually, so, once we get into our capital planning, we'll talk about the front lawn project and such. We actually have a, there is a rendering, not a rendering, but a site map that kind of shows some different amenities. This has been accounted for in that site map. So obviously, if council does agree and think that it's an okay location, staff certainly is, would make that happen.
Yeah, if you are facing the City Hall, like they said, there's lava rock there and we've had a lot of discussion at the, at the, this level, just talking about what we can do there. And this would be a nice addition, actually. And we have some other ideas that we'd like to bring forward in the future too. But this is not going to hinder what our plans were, for sure.
Absolutely not hinder it at all. I think it's a great, great idea to use a local artist to, to recognize local people who gave to, you know, $69,000 in a very short amount of time.
Yeah.
And thank you guys for helping coordinate that.
Yeah, we, we didn't really want to do bricks with names in them because, you know, that's been done by so many towns. We just thought, what if we had an artist that could actually create another piece of art? It's like a, kind of a cherry on the top of all of the things that we've been doing, so.
Yeah. So what they're asking for is to be able to, at, at no cost to the city, they're asking to, to put this art piece on City Square and then also to put a plaque in the City Hall entryway. So we would be, if you're okay with that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve that.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Fair, second by Martin, that we approve the placemaker's committee request to sponsor a recognition art piece on City Square and also a plaque inside the City Hall entryway. Discussion.
Are you still accepting further donations?
We'd love to take.
I think we just got another donation yesterday, right?
Actually, any additional funds will be used to maybe help maintain some of the things that we've purchased, so.
Just curious.
Yes, we would, oh, we'd be happy to take another donation.
You guys, make sure you look at me before you ask questions, all right? So Colin, go ahead.
You had said the plaque was 16 by 20 inches, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dave? And with those new donors, would they be recognized anyway? Or is that just, you're going to have another one eventually or just to put it out there?
So, and it's only over a hundred dollars or more. But yes, there will be a cutoff point before we actually have the plaque.
Okay, Colin, go ahead.
This is probably a weird question, but is there anybody that inspects such an installation for safety? It looks like an impaling hazard to me, just offhand, if it's right next to the roof. That might be an issue. Is that something that?
I don't think it will be quite as sharp as the picture shows, but it will be a point at the top. So I don't know. I guess, does the city have a issue with that?
Yeah. I think this would, this would not be something that would fall under like a building inspector or anything like that, but I think staff would work together to make sure that we placed it in an optimal spot.
Okay, good enough.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion and a second. And this has to do with city properties. So this would be a roll call vote. So you're approving, putting this art piece on City Square and also the plaque in the City Hall entryway, if you vote aye. So have Sandy call the roll.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Good luck. Thank you. All right, next up, this is B, Civil War Reenactment, South Park on August 14th, 2021. So that would be just in a few weeks here. And Andrew, you're the city rep here, right? And then Dennis is here also. So Andrew, you tell me how you want to handle this.
I thought Tracy was going to be here too.
I'm representing, I'm here instead of Tracy.
So I'll let him start and I'll just, I can answer questions about what I've discussed with Tracy and the group. Only some parts of it have to do with some questions with me. So we'll let him start and then I can answer any questions or jump in when needed.
All right.
Okay. I'm Dennis Lear, president of the Wapaka Historical Society. The Wapaka Historical Society is asking for permission to fire reenactment weapons at our Living History's Civil War program on Saturday, August 14th, at the Hutchinson House Museum in South Park. These weapons only fire caps and black powder and the firing will be scheduled for 11:00 AM, 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. The Saturday, August 14th event will be a living history program dedicated to educating the public about the Civil War. The event will run from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The Company East Second Wisconsin Reenactment Group will be setting up stations and tents in front of and to the west of the Hutchinson House Museum in South Park, telling about various parts of the Civil War. All parts of the event will take place within the park boundaries on this side. The group will have fire pits, which consist of lifting the sod off the ground for an in-ground fire. These fires are for cooking. Once they are finished with the event, they will replace the sod. There is also a bucket of water on hand just in case. In June, Wapaka Historical Society met with Andrew Whitman, Park and Rec Director, and received his okay for these fires. Some of the men involved in the group will be marching and showing the public larger demonstrations. We also spoke with Andrew Whitman last week and he approved the use of the southwest portion of the larger grass area across the road from Hutchinson House Museum. The firing of, excuse me, the firing of the weapons is only cap and black powder. When the weapons are fired, nothing leaves the gun. The powder is instead swept off to the side. The reenactment group stresses safety and are a well-trained and safe reenactment group. This group has also held events at the New London Heritage Historical Society and Wade House, among other locations in the state. We will schedule the firing in advance, 11:00 AM, 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM, so that the neighbors and residents will be aware of the event. The information will then be posted online, on our website, on Facebook, Instagram and in all publicity. And we have a representative here from the, from the group if there's any other questions.
All right. Andrew, what, do you have any?
No, I just wanted to reiterate that I did meet with them as far as the fires go, to maybe get ahead of some of the questions. The area that they're doing this in is an area that is not irrigated. There's really not what I would consider much grass there and I didn't feel like it would really damage anything to have the fires and then have them replace that sod, based on visually looking at those spots. As well as, you know, they've been very easy to work with as far as suggestions on where to hold different things and where to keep things during that day. So I don't see any issues at this point. And yeah, that's about it.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I was curious about the number of fires required. Was there a limit or a set number that they wanted to use?
Do you know?
Can you just use the microphone, please?
I know my wife and my daughter are going to be having one. I, I believe there's going to be a cooking demonstration. There might be a couple of, of dog tents, you know, which would be the individual soldier tents. They might have one or two fires. So my guess is probably only three. Just, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how many are going to be coming right now.
Can you tell us your name?
Eric Rowley.
Tracy had shared with me a picture of what they look like and the sizes and that kind of stuff. So we didn't talk about a limit or a number of them, but again, at that time, she didn't know how many people were coming either. So that may depend on that.
Dave, you have a question? Just a historical question from our own council. About three, four years ago, we turned down a Vietnam reenactment. I'm trying to figure out exactly why we did. I think I voted for it, but is that because of the gun portion? I don't remember.
Erin, I remember. There's more on that.
I can speak to.
Would this gun demonstration be any different than the Vietnam one?
So I can speak to some differences. I can't remember exactly why it was turned down, but I do know that that was an actual battle reenactment. So this is just a, you know, three set times where the blanks will be fired. This other, yeah, the other proposal was at Swan Park on the sled hill and it was a full-out battle reenactment. So those are the differences. I can't, I can't recall exactly why decisions were made, but that was that.
So I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Um, and these enactments are, is there a Confederate portion of people there also to show both sides? Or how, how does that work?
The one that we just did in, over in New London at the Historical Village, which we got a very realistic display of what Mother Nature could do to us. Saturday was rained out. We did have a, an actual battle where we did have our Confederate counterparts. I don't believe we're having any Confederate come, you know, for this. It's, as far as I know, it's just going to be, you know, the Union side of it because that's what my family portrays.
But that doesn't sound like you're positive that there wouldn't be the Confederate side.
There is somebody in the Wapaka area that I know in the past, he has dressed as a Confederate surgeon and had a, had a full demonstration for that. But I, I have not reached out to him yet. But I, I know he's also had a Union uniform and done that on, you know, on a Sunday. Confederate on Saturday, Union on Sunday. But as far as I know right now, it's only going to be the Union side.
To me, and I don't know if Chief Ozell was also a little bit in this conversation, it seemed more like a demonstration for educational purposes, not necessarily, not necessarily a reenactment of a battle or a war. And I think that's what I, my understanding was, is that it's, okay, this is how the guns work. This is what they look like. This is what they sounded like. More of an educational piece.
What we would be showing, you know, as far as the, we would be showing some marching scenarios, you know, and doing different maneuvers. And also showing this is what a, a, one of the Civil War muskets looks like, the loading of it, firing of it. One of our, one of my other friends would do camp life, showing what a hard tack looks like. And they might, some of them just have a, like a plastic demonstration of it. Other guys actually make hard tack and this is what this tooth breaking thing, you know, feels like to chew on. So camp life, you know, they, what it's, what it was like for these guys to go from Wisconsin, you know, Company Eve, the Second Wisconsin, actually mustered out of Oshkosh. And we got slaughtered at Gettysburg with General Reynolds and there was only, you know, just a handful of guys left at the end of the battle. But typically, they were railheaded so far and then a forced 20 to 30 mile road march. And it, it's just, you know, wasn't any fun. So then they, they talk about these kind of things and what it's like to, you know, be away from home, only getting $15 a month. And that you got, you had to then somehow send it back home to pay your mortgage. And letters finally finding you that the house burned down back home. So it's these kind of things. You know, it's more of an education, not necessarily, you know, we're not going to do a battle. We do these at school days and things like that. Downtown Appleton, there's usually two a year. There was one up in Merrill that had been going on for 20 years and the teacher was just let go. And that was at a park right behind the school. The last number of years, they actually got to bring a cannon in. We will not be bringing any cannons in, so don't, we, don't worry about that. But it, it's strictly just an educational. My wife is, I believe she's going to be talking about what the, the ladies' aide did and just to let everybody know, if it wasn't for the ladies back home, we would all be talking with a southern accent. They were a very vital part of the Union winning the war, so.
Any questions? Do you, what do you, what do you expect for participants? And then what do you expect for a crowd?
Participants, I just heard today that there's one of, a husband and wife team had to back out because actually a couple of weeks ago, his brother passed away and not everybody was able to make it to the funeral. So the ceremony back home here happens to land on that same day. So participants, as of right now, I know it's going to be me, my son on the, the soldier side, my wife and my, and my daughter. And we're trying to reach out to, to other members. side, my wife and my, and my daughter, and we're trying to reach out to, to other members to, you know, get a, get a head count. Spectators, if you guys could get the word out and, you know, that we're having it, if it's approved, that would be wonderful. It, it is a, it, it's a good education. There's a lot of things that I never knew about, you know, they, they touched on the Civil War in school, but it wasn't until I actually started doing these reenactments that, wow, this stuff actually happened.
So you just had one in New London, I saw that, that was in the Post. How many participants did you have there, and, and what was the size of the crowd?
I think that on Saturday was actually our, you know, the bigger day, which got rained out. We had about 25 Union soldiers, and there was about maybe 10 Confederates. We had two cannons, a P, you know, a cannon on both sides. Sunday, for spectators, I, I think we had about 300, just a rough guesstimate. And for being their first one, that's, that's not bad.
Go ahead, Colin.
When I looked at your particular website, it seemed to say that you had at most 60 members?
That's, that's everybody.
And then the same date, I saw other locations that you might be doing similar reenactments at?
Yes.
So at the most, to help with Brian's question, and that was my question too, how many people, at the most, max, you'd have, if everybody participated, it'd be 60.
Would be 60.
But you're guessing it'll be quite a bit less than that?
Yes.
Probably half or, or less.
Half or less. I'm probably leaning a little more to less, because there are, as, as a reenactor, we can pick and choose which ones we want to go to.
And then also, no cannons, and the weapons you use are some sort of musket or something?
It's a reproduction. I have a reproduction Springfield musket. It has a fulminated mercury cap that you put on, and that, when the, when the hammer strikes, it goes down a tube, the spark goes down a tube, and the black powder is ignited. Now, that, we do not even pull the rammer. We pour the powder down the end of the barrel and kind of tamp it on the ground to, to seed it in the bottom of the barrel. And there's no, we don't ram, we don't do anything. And it's just, all it is, is black powder burning. We highly stress safety, so even, you know, firing in a demonstration like this, we would load facing the crowd, we would then be turned, take a few steps back, and when we fire, they don't actually get to see the hammer hit, but we do high elevation, so there's, nobody's going to be getting hurt.
Go ahead, Colin.
How loud is it?
It's about, about like a, a shotgun, if even that.
Okay, so like trap-shooting shotguns?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? And Dennis, I'm assuming that, I'll come back to you, Tom, sorry. Dennis, I'm assuming since you are here tonight, the Historical Society is okay with this event? And you've done your research on it? Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Just because it was brought up, I did some quick Googling, and there was a Wapaka County Post story that reported on the Vietnam War reenactment. At that time, the city attorney advised that the group would be violating ordinance in Wapaka by discharging firearms. And there was discussion in the article about possibly changing the ordinance to allow case-by-case permission.
And did that ever happen?
I, I don't know from the article. I don't know. I, I wasn't part of it, so.
Do you recall that, Chief?
I, I don't recall whether that discussion happened or not.
What's, what's the definition of a firearm, though?
Well, Mayor, luckily, the ordinance defines that, and it says, sorry. "Any weapon or instrumentality from which a shot, bullet, or pellet may be discharged or expelled."
So this would not meet that definition, correct?
Well, if it may, if it may expel a shot, bullet, or pellet.
Go ahead.
Our, our muskets are reproduction, but because they cost a fair amount of money, they can be used for hunting, you know, black powder muzzleloading in the, in the fall. So they would fall under that. They may put out a projectile, but I mean, what we do during this time, we, we don't have any projectiles coming out, nothing.
Mayor? I believe they would fall under the, where the fireworks are, in that area, and not under the firearms because of the noise and an explosion.
So it's not a firearm, it's fire-
Well, it's, yeah, any explosion, so just like any firework, the, nobody can have a firework that makes any noise or whatever it may be. I'll have to look up the ordinance. So I think that's where it falls under.
All right, God, go ahead.
I guess, are they asking for our permission to discharge, along with their demonstration, discharge a device that's going to make noise? I guess every, and then they're asking our permission, so, is, I guess that's where I'm getting at. So if we give them our permission, or not give them our permission?
But you would have to ask, you should ask him, but that's what it sounds like, yeah.
We would, in order to do our, our demonstrations, we, n- nobody would come. If all we're doing is marching around, nobody would come.
Well, go ahead.
So when we granted permission for Foxfire to be shooting their weapons per their DNR permit, if that would not have been allowed per the ordinance, then I don't see how we could have done that.
I don't know how to answer that question.
It's not, well, it's more of a comment. I, I think it's, I, I don't see that, I, I don't understand why, if we could do that for them, why it couldn't be done in this situation.
So I was looking at it more like, how can we get this to work? And, and it sounds like maybe some of you are looking at it as, how can we get it so they can do it here? So, I mean, you know, I, I'm a little confused here, but Eric, go ahead.
Haven't we had cannon demonstrations in, in the same park in the past?
Yeah.
At certain events? Wouldn't that be the same thing?
Yeah, well, I don't remember when a cannon was shot off in South Park, but.
Yeah, there you go, Lincoln.
I'm going to just, let, let me, let me go to council members here first. Go ahead, to me.
We've also had weapons discharged during the Fourth of July parade. Every year we do that.
And I know they do them out at the VFW also. Yeah, I mean, it's, so, it, you know, it's, it does happen, there's no doubt. But it doesn't sound like our ordinance. Maybe we should be talking more about, we, we need to adjust our ordinance, is what we need to do. I think that was your point, Tom.
Yes.
Or follow our ordinance.
Yeah. Dave, go ahead.
Not really, just another time, isn't it, military funerals on, on guard at the end, in your churches or funeral homes, so.
Right.
That's a lot more.
Right.
This doesn't even do that much, I don't think.
Let me go to Aaron here first, then I'll come back to you.
Well, thanks, Mayor. Just to, a little more came to my head for perspective on that other one that maybe didn't go at Swan Park. I think more that the conversation around that was that it was a Vietnam reenactment, which at the time was a lot more controversial. There was a lot, a lot of Vietnam vets, I think, that gave public input that it was not something that they wanted to see happen. So I think it was actually less about the firing of, of things in the battle reenactment, more about the, the fact that it was Vietnam, not Civil War, World War II, things like that.
Go ahead, Mary.
I, I think you're right, Aaron. I, I do remember that. I personally am not going to be able to vote to have this event, because I think it is equally as controversial, or at least potentially as controversial of a subject in, in our current I, I, I think we should be consistent, and, and I just don't think this should occur in Wapaka.
How so contro, how so controversial, Mary, I guess, I don't understand.
The Confederate flags that we see hanging in people's, in front of their homes, or in the back of their pickup trucks, can incite some discomfort in a part of our population. And I think we need to be sensitive to that. So that's my opinion, I, I'm just putting it out there.
Good. Any other? Go ahead.
Like was said, you know, with the VFW marching in the parade, they shoot the blanks. That's similar to what we're doing. It, it, there's no projectile, it's just, it's just a blank. The, the rifles that they use can have a projectile come out. So as far as the, what the ordinance says, I, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, state we're, you know, it's, it's safe, there's, there's no projectiles leaving the end of the barrel.
Okay, so we, we've hashed this over for a while here, and, and their request is to have this reenactment at South Park by the Hutchinson End, to be able to shoot off reenactment weapons on August 14th, 2000, this year, from 11:00 a.m., at 11:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m., and 3:00 p.m. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve this?
I'll move to approve.
I will second.
We have a motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve of the Wapaka Historical Society's request to fire reenactment weapons with only fire caps and black powder for the Libra, Living History Civil War Program on Saturday, August 14th, 2021, at the Hutchinson House Museum in South Park. The firings are scheduled at 11:00 a.m., 1:00 p.m., and 3:00 p.m., and they will make sure all the neighbors are aware of this event prior to it happening. Any further discussion?
Do we need to add anything for the permission of having fires?
Well, that's, we are approving that with this motion.
So the fire, not the firing and the, the fires are approved as well?
Oh, of the fires, too?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to add that to your motion? Because that's not in here.
Yeah.
That they have permission to have fires also. Thank you, Colin.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's just added, okay.
Maybe a number of fires?
I, at, at tops, I believe five. We'll just, just in case we, we can get some more people.
You're okay with that?
Five or less.
Five or less? Dave, you're okay? Okay, that's part of the motion, done. Anybody else? Dimitri, go ahead.
I, I support what you're trying to organize. I think it's educational from the standpoint of showing the sacrifices that were made.
I, I think it's, I think it's beneficial, because it, it illustrates the sacrifices that have been made to, to end slavery, and, and so I think it, it's, it's a, it's a reminder, maybe, to those people who are flying those Confederate flags that, you know, I mean, a lot of people died, fighting for, for slavery to end. Anyway, my only concern, though, is I just, I feel uncomfortable approving something that is not, that, that conflicts with our own ordinances. And so I, I guess I'm just really unclear as to whether or not, in, in Tom's opinion, would this then be considered a firearm, or would it not? Because it does not execute a projectile during its use on the, on the date in question.
Well. So that, I read the definition of what a firearm is, according to the ordinance, which says that it may. And, and then discharge isn't really defined, so I guess it could be debatable if they're really discharging a firearm if there's no projectile being admitted. But, you know.
Okay.
That's what the ordinance says.
Right, yeah, I, I get it, but I also see how it could be debated, so, all right. I guess I'm comfortable with it, then.
Well, we can use history.
Well, just because we've always disregarded our own ordinances doesn't justify disregarding them in the future.
Well, does that mean that we disregarded them? Maybe we didn't. Maybe, maybe it was okay, but, maybe it, I mean, that's what I'm assuming, that it was okay back then, because they weren't projecting anything.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be either way, yeah. Paul, go ahead.
Mayor, I move the previous question to end debate.
Oh, okay, yeah. I think you actually need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Paul, second by Alan, that we vote on this question.
You need to, you need to vote on ending debate, then vote.
Thank you, Paul, thank you. All right, so we are voting to end the debate. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we'll go right to a roll call vote then. So if you vote aye, you're voting in favor of this reenactment.
Ready?
Yep.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
No.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, good luck. We'll talk to Josh, too, and make sure that we get something out on our website and our remarks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good luck. Dennis, thank you for attending. All right, let's go to rezoning of property at 1043 Royalton Street. This has to do with ordinance number 082021, so this is actually a first reading tonight, but I'll, I'll let Aaron explain what's going on here.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. So this is, just to set it up, Jeff will explain the rezoning, but this is, what probably council members know, it's the old ServiceMaster property. There's been a proposal to get in that building and reuse it for a very similar use. And as a result of going through that process, site plan reviews were done, and other conversation has been had, and Jeff will take you through the rezoning report and, and give you all the information on that. Jeff, go ahead.
Thanks, Aaron. Eric, good evening, council members.
Hi, Jeff.
So the prospective buyer of the building Aaron just referenced is looking at just that building, and you may recall that there are two buildings on the property, one to the east and one to the west, and it's the larger building to the east that the prospective buyer, Mr. Who Jack, is interested in purchasing. The use is going to be effectively the same as ServiceMaster, it's a restoration-oriented business. Because the, because the purchaser is not interested in the property to the west, or excuse me, the building to the west, a land division is required, so that the, that property can then be sold, independent of the old ServiceMaster building. In order to approve the land division and meet the setback requirements, a rezon is required, because the current zoning district establishes setbacks that would effectively prohibit dividing that parcel. So what we're looking at is a rezone from B5 to B1. Now, there is an RC Resource Conservation District on that property, mainly the northern part of the property. It'll be unaffected by the proposed development. There won't be any significant, at least to our knowledge right now, there won't be any significant proposals for any significant change to the site itself. A land, or excuse me, a comprehensive plan amendment is required, because the comprehensive- A land, or excuse me, a comprehensive plan amendment is required because the comprehensive plan inadvertently identified that property as, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was medium density residential. Is that correct?
I think it was actually low density residential, but either way, yep.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. It's right there in my report. I should probably read my report while I'm reading my report. So low density residential is what it's classified. The intention was actually for those three or four pieces of property in that location to be classified consistent with other uses, basically mixed use. So the comp plan will go through the process of amendment, uh, and once amended, the zoning ordinance can be approved. So just to be clear, uh, the zoning ordinance, if the common council moves to approve it, uh, excuse me, the zoning change, if the common council moves to approve it, will be contingent upon a change to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. So again, we're talking about a use that's compatible with the proposed district. With that amendment to the comp plan, it'll be consistent with the comp plan. I think this is in the best interest of the city. There are similar uses both southeast and southwest of the property. And it puts the structure back to use. So be happy to address any questions the council may have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right, so this is the first reading. So you will see this on our agenda as a second reading at our next meeting. Okay, let's move on. Uh, we have a development agreement with the Danes Hall Plaza. And Aaron, you're there. I, I see Jack is also here tonight. So hi, Jack.
All right, thanks, Mayor Smith. Uh, you guys will see a memo on page one fifty of your packet. This outlines, uh, actually a conversation that's been happening for a couple of years. As the planning stages went forth with North, North Main Street reconstruction, uh, the city actually worked with Danes Hall at that time and came up with some conceptual plans for the property that were, the area that we're talking about. The reason that those conceptual plans were come up with was because we knew that the, the direction we were moving with that stretch of North Main Street, which should be shown in your, let me get to it here. Which is kind of shown right here. See, that's the intersection of Granite and North Main Street. So that's going to be vacated and that road has already actually been turned to gravel, some of it. And it will not be used as a through street anymore. So upon that vacation, a typical process would be, it would be split fifty percent down the middle. Some would go to one property, the other would go to the other. We're proposing this development agreement to basically have that approximate area turned over to the Danes Hall. And in turn, they would agree to improve that area with a plaza that could be used by their business, also accessible to the public. They'd have an ADA ramp that would access their door, their main door, uh, which if you're looking, if you're walking in Main Street level, I'm counting that as the basement. And then that main door is up those stairs. They'd have an ADA ramp to that area. Uh, also looking at parking on the north end. And that conceptual drawing is right here. And the reason it's so conceptual at this point, uh, and the reason this development agreement is coming forward before detail is because they have engaged with a company, landscape architect, to actually come up with those detailed plans. But they don't want to spend money on that unless they know that the city is in fact in favor of a development agreement as being proposed. So the next steps would be for them to engage in actual detailed plans. They would then come back to the city, work with the city to implement those plans and, uh, within the timelines suggested in that agreement. So the, really, when we're talking about clocks in a timeline here, we're talking about twelve months from the vacation of the road or the right of way. So as soon as the vacation, or as soon as the right of way is vacated, handed over to the Danes Hall, they had to have twelve months to commence the project and then twelve months from commencement to finish. And that is, uh, an overview of what we're looking at to, in staff's opinion, is, is a way to improve North Main Street even further than, than what we have to this point.
Jack, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, I, I think our main goal here is to provide, uh, safe access for people with disabilities and, uh, mobility issues because when, uh, the street was originally going up the hill on Main Street, people could pull up and back into the, basically to the door. There's really no level area outside that door now where people can get in. And we need that door for access because that's the floor that the elevator comes to. It doesn't come to the Granite Street door. So that's our, that's our, our, our main concern is being able to have people with disabilities or mobility issues be able to get into the building. And then also to provide a, a visually appealing end to Main Street because when you're coming north on Main Street, you know, it could be drastically improved from what you, what you see, uh, right now. I, I think it's, it's already improved now that the broken up asphalt is, you know, taken out coming down the hill. But, uh, you know, we can do better than, than that, you know, for the end of Main Street. But, uh, those are our two, uh, concerns right now. We do have an agreement, uh, with the Rettler Corp., but I believe they're the ones doing the design work on the splash pad. And it's, it's Swan Park. Uh, we put out nu- numerous requests for landscape architects, uh, and contractors to bid on the project. But it's like anything else. This is, uh, the Rettler Corporation, uh, is one of the few that responded and could meet the timeline of twelve months, uh, of starting and, uh, twelve months to, uh, complete the project. The agreement we have with them, after talking to the Rettler Corporation, is, uh, they agree they, it, it would be best if we can resolve something with the, you know, the city and the city council before moving forward, uh, with our contract. Our contract states that, uh, right now they would come up with three conceptual designs and then once that's approved, would move into the detailed, uh, you know, actual elevation design, uh, blueprints to move forward. And then obviously bid out all the contract work, you know, from landscaping to concrete and, the other reason, uh, that's very important is right now our, our property line ends right at the face of the building. We don't have any property. So when, uh, the lands- landscape contractors came out, they, they, uh, you know, like a quick judgment of, as they said, we need sixty feet of linear space to get to that elevation for wheelchair, uh, compliance, you know, so many feet per, for, for linear feet for, uh, elevation. So that's the reason, uh, we're, we're asking for that, that much of the property.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Paul, go ahead.
What exactly is a council ring? I just, I was looking at.
Oh, on, on the plan?
Yeah, on the plan.
It was, it was kind of like, uh, uh, it was in the original concept as a gathering space. It's like
Okay.
a, a, a rock formation, uh.
And Jack, just to be clear, um, I'm pretty sure that's the only part of this concept plan that probably will not happen. That's not in the plans at this point.
Yeah, that, that was in the original concept plan. Now we're, uh, uh, going with the Rettler Corporation. We're waiting on their concept plans, which will, will be very similar. It's going to be, still be a handicap accessible, some kind of plaza in the front, uh, uh, decorative, uh, aspects to it to blend in with Main Street.
Question? So basically, uh, Jack, we need a motion to, um, to deed the property over to Danes Home, is that it? Subject to? What?
Well, he needs to begin the project within twelve months. That's basically, right?
I would say that the motion would be to, um, approve the developers' agreement, which outlines all of that, the timelines, the vacation.
I think he's asking though, what, what the city is, is giving in return for it, right?
I'm just wondering how to word the motion.
Yeah, I, I think you could just approve the developers' agreement.
Okay.
Because it spells all of that out. Yeah.
I moved to approve the developers' agreement.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve the developers. By Martin, second by Pritchatsky. Discussion. Andrew.
Just looking at this map, I just want to see if there was any conversations about, is there potentially going to need to be changes in Rasmussen Park to accommodate that ramp? Or is that just not to scale based on where the line is and our sign and that, that type of stuff? Has that been discussed at all?
So when the detailed plans come out from Rettler, I think we will not vacate that property until we see those detailed plans because those detailed plans will tell us exactly how much is needed. And then as soon as that's done and determined, that's when the certified survey map will be done. And Danes Hall has agreed to pay for that certified survey map.
That's correct.
That tells exactly what property is being deeded over at that point.
At that point, we'll know more of what possible changes. The thing that made it, brought it up is we thought it'd be a great time to put a new sign up. So we have a new sign ordered because of, you know, all the construction down there. And I don't want to put it up in the same spot if that's going to be, if we're just going to be moving it right away. That's, that's all. And I have no problem doing that. I just wanted to know if that was discussed and we need to just, you know, communicate together what possibly may need to change on that hillside.
Yeah, we can certainly go take a look at that sign and give you a pretty good idea of if we should move it or not. But we, yeah, we'll talk. We'll work through that for sure.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, development agreement with, uh, Danes Hall of Wapaka LLC. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Sandy will call her own.
Colin Dykstra?
Uh, aye, approved.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
And ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next up, we have.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. Jack, sorry. Thanks, Jack. Good. Look forward to working with you. On this. All right, from HH Heinder, we have a request, uh, to extend their premise description for their Heinder Fest, uh, on September eleventh, twenty twenty-one. And Mike is not here tonight, but I, this is similar to what he did, was it two years ago that he did it? Right? I don't think he did one last year. Same as it was. Oh, he did? Okay. And we approved it last year too?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it's three years in a row. And Chief, you're okay with that?
I am.
Okay. All right, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second? Oh, gross.
I didn't say adjourn, Paul.
I didn't say anything.
Oh, who was, who made the motion? I'm sorry. Motion by Mayo, second by Martin, that we approve, uh, the request, uh, from HH Heinder to extend their premise for Heinder Fest on September eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, couple more ordinances here we need to go through. Uh, this is ordinance number zero nine twenty twenty-one. And this is an ordinance amending chapter seventeen of the City of Wapaka zoning ordinance. And again, this is the first reading, but, uh, I'll just have Aaron explain to you what this is about.
And I'm going to kick it to Jeff right away. Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you, Aaron. So a number of housekeeping changes are made, some typos and things like that. And you'll notice that table up there. Uh, in the original draft, everywhere you see Cs were Ps and everywhere you see Ps were Cs. That was wrong, correcting that. Uh, but the substantive changes are oriented around signs. So the first one that went to Plan Commission Review is effectively going back in time a little bit when it comes to ground signs within the B two B, shoot, I forgot the district, within the downtown districts, B two seven. At one point in time, you could have signs right to the right of way. Uh, at some point thereafter, in the two thousand and six ordinance, uh, the setback was established to be no less than the height of the actual sign. So if you have a twenty foot sign, uh, the sign must be setback twenty feet from the right of way. Um, that's created a number of problems because the vast majority of signs in the downtown area, ground signs anyway, were actually installed back when there was no setback. So the creation of that setback creates non-conforming signs and that limits what can be done with those signs. Um, I know that members of the Plan Commission, perhaps members of the Common Council, walked the area, uh, looked at those signs and essentially or effectively felt that they were appropriate. Um, so we're trying to, um, basically restore that status as a conforming sign. Uh, the other thing we're looking at is increasing the maximum base area for ground signs from one hundred square feet to one hundred and fifty square feet, mainly to give some flexibility for multi-tenant ground signs. So there are a number of those where you have one sign structure that may have two or three or more, um, sign panels on it, you know, reflecting two or three or more businesses on the property. Uh, one hundred constraint, hundred foot square foot limit, um, constrains the ability of, of most of those businesses to do the signs that they're like. So before you tonight is an increase from the one hundred and fifty. Uh, and then finally, it's historic, as an area, you got to scroll down a little bit to get to that part. What we have in the city, what we have in many mature cities, are these old wall signs that were painted or otherwise affixed to old structures. Uh, the one that comes to mind, the one I put up here, um, is the, the furniture service sign on, oh, I shoot, I forgot what structure. I think it's the corner of, uh, Main Street and Sessions. But we're looking at trying to provide some protection to existing historic wall signs. Uh, the main reason being wall signs are limited in terms of the number in the city. And what we don't want to see is a business that's, that needs to put up a new wall sign, but can't because there's, there's an existing historic wall sign. We, we don't want the, that individual to have to choose between not having a sign reflecting his or her business or potentially removing, defacing, replacing the existing historic sign. So a number of communities in Wisconsin start to do this with all manner of signs. I think at some point, uh, the Plan Commission and staff are going to want to meet with the Historic Preservation Committee and start talking about signs beyond wall signs, like projecting signs and other signs. Um, but at present, we're requesting the amendment here that would establish the, the ability to maintain historic signs in place. And those signs would not be counted to either the maximum number of wall signs allowed or the maximum square footage of wall signs allowed. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding that.
Thanks, Jeff. And this is, uh, this ordinance was recommended by City Plan Commission to move forward to City Council.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? All right, again, this first reading will see this as a second reading at our next city council meeting. All right, let's go to, uh, discussion, consideration of ordinance number ten twenty-one. It's an ordinance amending section twelve point zero two, parent five, parent E, as it deals with intoxicating liquor and ferment- fermented malt beverages in the City of Wapaka municipal code. Aaron, you want to lead us off? I know, uh, Tom already had, was instrumental in this too, so we'll see where it goes here.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, you'll find a memo on page one eighty-three of your packet. And this outlines, just to give a little background, a conversation that, uh, Mr. Scott Newman had with myself and Mayor Smith. This was months ago. And actually, he provided written public input during the time where most of our public input was written. Um, we read it aloud at a council meeting and it was asking council to, uh, take another look at and possibly amend the ordinance that requires a separate outdoor entrance exit for areas that sell liquor and fermented malt beverages. So we've had conversations, worked with, uh, Attorney Hart on drafting something for council to take a look at and review and consider. And that is, uh, the result is what you see in front of you. This is something that we've also included Chief Hozell in on. And, and to be honest, it's something that we had had conversations on, not in a ton of depth, but before we even heard from Mr. Newman, just on, on this ordinance in general. In looking at other ordinances, other communities, we did find that we are in, um, probably a minority, uh, of, of communities that have this ordinance that require that separate, uh, entrance and exit. But I'm just going to give a quick highlight of the changes that are suggested in this amended version of the ordinance. So, uh, it would remove the requirement for the separate outdoor entrance exit, meaning patrons could enter the primary business and access the location where liquor and fermented malt beverages are sold once inside the primary business. This may apply to. This may apply to convenience stores, grocery stores, et cetera. Uh, the interior entrance to the place of liquor and fermented malt beverages would be defined by an entranceway that is no wider than 10 feet and no narrower than three feet. That would allow it to kind of stay confined and be in a defined area. That's, uh, an example of something we've seen in other ordinances. The licensee shall designate cash registers for the sale of all fermented malt beverages and liquor, which must be staffed by an individual holding an operator's license, who shall be present in the cash register checkout area at all times when the sale of liquor is permitted and who shall observe the checkout of all alcoholic beverages. If all cash register attendees are licensed, this would allow all registers to be used for checkout of liquor and fermented and malt beverages. So it's not saying that there needs to be a separate one for that area, but it, they, everyone, um, who is checking out has to meet all the requirements outlined there. And the area in which fermented malt beverages or liquor is sold shall be arranged and constructed in a manner so as to permit and facilitate its closing during the hours and days required by Wisconsin state statutes and applicable city ordinances. So this area shall, so you could imagine something like when you go to the mall and have a gate that closes when some of those, you know, that could be an example of what it would look like from that interior, uh, entrance and exit. So Attorney Hart, I don't know, before I go any further, do you have any other, um, comments?
No.
So I guess this is the discussion in front of you tonight. And, um, with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Again, remember this is the first reading, so this will, uh, be posted, uh, and, uh, we'll discuss, uh, we'll have the second reading at our August meeting. But do anybody have any specific questions or comments? All right, that's the first reading of that ordinance. Let's go on to the next one, which is letter H. Uh, this is discussion, consideration of ordinance number 11-21 and ordinance creating section 10.05, uh, parent 16 of the City of Willpacka Municipal Code. Uh, and again, this is the first reading and this has to do with the, the light ordinance that we've had discussions with, uh, over the last few months. Uh, and again, I'll just, is this Aaron or is this Jeff here?
This would be me.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, page 196 of your packet this time. You'll find a memo outlining the background and summary of our discussions. As Mayor said, we've had this discussion over the past several months and mostly at the Plan Commission level. I think we've probably talked about it at two or three separate meetings. Um, there was a petition that was brought forward that kind of brought this to light, um, and brought it to our attention. I'd have had many conversations with Ms. McBane, who's in the, uh, audience tonight um, about her specific, um, issue with a residential light that, uh, was, um, deemed a, a public nuisance to her or a nuisance to her and her property. Uh, so what you see here is we have, we were directed, staff is directed by Plan Commission to, to draft an ordinance that could be considered for adoption. Um, the ordinance was drafted with the following principles. It applies to only residential properties. So commercial lighting is really, especially new commercial lighting, is taken care of in site plan review processes and things of that nature. So we're talking residential only. Um, a structure, uh, basically we wanted this ordinance structure to allow for a more simplistic approach to enforceability. That when we dove into light ordinances, there are, you know, some can be a couple pages long and some can be 15, 16, 17 pages long. Can get into needing measurement tools that measures lumens and, um, so on and so forth. We wanted to take a little more simplistic and realistic approach to, um, enforcement should something be adopted. Um, I, I outlined in there what enforcement would look like, um, over that in a second. And then we also wanted to make sure that if we created, if there was an ordinance that was supported by council, we wanted to have a grandfather clause in it because we knew it was possible that X amount, you know, hundreds of lights could be out of compliance as soon as that was in place. So you'll see the ordinance does have a grandfather clause that would allow the residential lights that do not currently meet the standards to remain in place until a formal complaint is made. At that time, there would be a letter of potential violation to the, um, the resident that may have this light that's too bright. Then it would move to a compliance order. And, uh, let me see, I gotta make sure I have that. And then someone would go on, uh, site to check and see if there was actually, if it did not meet the, the ordinance. Um, so there are a couple of things with this. Let me kind of go through how we decided to do this. Let's see. Probably the most important thing to mention is that instead of like a lumen measurement or anything like that, we looked at using wattage, uh, as something to do. So we chose 80 watts or less per bulb. Um, and this is based off of dark sky lighting standards, which is something that some lighting ordinances use across the country. It's a recognized set of standards. Um, they say anything from 40 to 80 watts is acceptable and anything over that is excessive. Is how they mention it. Um, exemptions you can see in there, uh, public street lighting, uh, holiday lighting, approved historic lighting fixtures, uh, existing exterior lighting that does not meet the standards, as I mentioned before. So my, in my recommendation, and I've, I've, you know, this is something I've mentioned in Plan Commission as well. I am, to be honest, I've had conversations with, uh, Ms. McBane and, and I absolutely sympathize with that scenario and, and how that may affect, um, her and, and her property. For me, as a city administrator, I also feel like it's my job to, to kind of deem between public and private nuisances. Um, we've been through this conversation for a lot of months. So my recommendation is to actually not enact an ordinance at this time because I myself have heard the one, um, it's been a singular issue, uh, at least from a staff standpoint. Maybe I'm not hearing all of it. Uh, there could be other things that, that elected officials are hearing and I, you know, and feel free to let us know if that's the case. But right now, it's my recommendation not to approve it because of challenges with enforceability, because it's more of a private nuisance in my eyes than a public nuisance, so on and so forth. So with that being said, I'd open it up to questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Again, remember that this is the first reading and, uh, you really don't have to make a decision on this ordinance until our next meeting, but, uh, Paul, I know you wanted to say something.
Aaron, I'm not sure I, I agree with your assessment of needing the ordinance or not. It sounds like you have, in the ordinance, a mechanism to, um, allow somebody that has a problem with a neighbor's lighting to complain and that's when it would take effect. It wouldn't, as you said, it wouldn't automatically put multiple houses in violation just because they're in excess of the wattage or whatever it might be. A neighbor would have to actually complain about it and that's when it would, would, the city would act and investigate. I think this is a good thing. I believe that there, I, there's a, a house right across the street from me that previously had a exterior light that was a big nuisance. They've since mitigated that. They've turned it around and it's actually shining at their house now. It's still quite bright, but it's not a nuisance in my mind. So they've, they've acted on their own. And, uh, what Regina has, has relayed to me is, uh, her neighbor is, it, it put this giant light in it. It's a big pain. And without the ordinance, without the city being able to step in and help her out, I'm not sure there's, there's anything she can do about it other than persuade her neighbor to take it down or shine it in a different direction or, uh, she's kind of helpless. So I think that's, that's the reason we have, have ordinances. And I think this would be a good thing for, for the city to act now.
Good. Anybody else have any other comments?
Comment here, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm supportive of the ordinance also, but I would not use wattage as the standard. I would use lumens. Uh, with the advent of LED bulbs now, you can get very, very bright light from very, very little wattage. And I think that's a better measure, uh, lumens rather than the wattage. That's the one thing I would change. Otherwise, I think it's a good ordinance.
I agree with that.
All right, Scott, go ahead.
Who gets to set the standard then for the lumen limit?
Well.
I'm just asking you, Alan.
No, no, if you take an 80-watt or equivalent incandescent bulb, it produces X number of lumens. Okay? So if that's the threshold, then that's the lumens that you use.
So we have to determine a lumen threshold then?
Right.
And how do we determine that is my question. It could be one city's version. I, I just, it's a question to throw out there when we get to that point.
Well, we probably need to write it into the ordinance, quite honestly, but.
Sure.
Paul, Iggen, go ahead.
Uh, well, first of all, Alan, you said exactly what I was going to point out. Um, second of all, um, if properties are grandfathered in currently, um, they're only grandfathered until someone make, makes a complaint? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. So. Well, and makes a complaint and we find that it is in fact.
Okay, so how is it, how is it truly being grandfathered, being able to stay there? If, you know, I, I have a, a spotlight going down, floodlight going down my driveway. I'm not sure how many feet it is, but if that would be out of compliance, it's been there for 20, 25 years. So if someone makes a complaint, then at that point, even though it's been there and existing and perfectly fine, then I'd have to take it down?
That's correct. Grandfather may not be the right word to use, but the example you just gave is correct.
Part of the difficulty with this ordinance, obviously, is going to be enforcement. There's no doubt about that. Instead of making everybody replace their lights, outside lights that don't meet that requirement, you needed to put something in there that met that. And so Alan, maybe you can work with Aaron or Tom, whoever wrote this ordinance to.
I'd be happy to. I have done lighting in the past and so I'd, I'd be happy to work on the lumen threshold.
Now, we need to probably get this out fairly fast or else we're going to end up with another first reading in August because we're making a change to this ordinance unless you don't think it's a significant change. Right? Tom, I'm thinking.
Yeah, and I guess we don't know what that change is yet, so we'd need to come to that decision.
Okay. I mean, it's not the worst thing to do another first reading in August. I get it. If we can get it figured out, that would be great. Go ahead.
Yeah, so you're talking about enforcement, Mayor. I just to be remiss, if I didn't say this, I want to speak a little bit to that enforcement, how it's a little different than like a regular code enforcement type scenario. So typically, code enforcement is all done from the street or the right of way. So we can see accessory structures that are placed without permits. We can see sidewalks that haven't been shoveled. We can see, um, grass that hasn't been mowed. Um, this is a little different in the fact that actually we're entering the property. So we'd give notice, you know, ask for permission to enter the property. If that person said no, um, that is a little different dynamic to it, which is actually why we brought in, uh, Chief. Uh, so our code enforcement officer, Elizabeth, myself, and Chief Hosele have all been working kind of through this to see how that would look. And I will say Chief has been, um, and the police department has been really good in helping with some code enforcement stuff this year, in a year that we've been really busy. Um, and we would certainly continue to have that relationship continue because of the different dynamics of enforcing something while actually entering a property of someone who may not be very positive on it. I'm not, I'm usually not a gla, I'm usually not a worst-case scenario person, but I.
Mayor.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dimitri.
Are, are we not talking about exterior lights here? We, why wouldn't we need to enter a property to, uh, observe that?
We, we are still talking about exterior lights, but we don't even need to really cross onto their property. We're still going to need to make contact. If we're going to go unscrew a light bulb, which we may not be doing because it may be lumens, right? But we would need to be engaging on that property with their property, even if it's on the exterior.
Okay.
Are you okay, Paul?
Yeah. I, I don't see, I don't see why that's a problem.
Dimitri, go ahead.
You can get a, a lumens meter on Amazon for about 25 bucks. And so if a neighbor's complaining, a police officer can go onto the neighbor's property, the person that's complaining, and sample the intensity of the, of the light on that neighbor's property. We don't necessarily need to know the lumens up close to the bulb. It's the lumens that by the time it hits the other person's property. So for instance, if you had a thousand watt or whatever equivalent lumen, but you, you weren't surrounded by neighbors for a mile in every direction, the amount, the intensity of the light that would reach neighbors wasn't so small that it wouldn't matter. That's what, what we should be measuring is the light intensity on the neighboring property.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to be quite honestly, too. I mean, yeah.
That's what I was kind of saying then, because you could have a potential the other way for somebody to have a little bit, uh, cause some problems or consternation with their neighbor by calling, complaining, and then the police start knocking on the door with a, correct, uh, compliance officer, you know, it may. So I, I, this way would be much better way to measure it, I think. And you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that abuse possibly happen.
Alan, you had something else?
Yeah, the measure is, uh, lumens per square meter of intensity at, at a given point. So that, that would become the threshold then if we're talking about changing it to, uh, to the, to the reception point rather than the, uh, place where it's being generated.
Next meeting, we're going to talk debits and credits and balance sheets.
Well, I can, here's a more, it, it used to be called Candela.
Okay. All right. Paul, Iggen, go ahead.
Aaron, what about, um, lights on, motion sensing lights on timers? For instance, you have a motion sensing light that pops on when there's a, senses something and then goes off five or 10 minutes later. Is that also subject to this particular?
It would be, yeah. Any, any exterior lighting.
Well, but remember, it has to be, uh, there has to be a complaint.
I, I realize that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just doesn't make sense that if you have something that goes on for five, three, five minutes when someone comes into the driveway, parks their car and then goes off, you know, in five minutes after they're done, that that would be a nuisance.
Yeah, I think we talked about that too at the City Planning Commission meeting. Sometimes those are even worse than lights that are on all the time. You know, when they turn on and they, ugh, like that. Just my comment.
Mayor, uh, the re, the reason why, uh, Mr. Jensen and I had put in wattage there versus lumens because there's conversion charts that are online. And we thought it would be easier for homeowners to identify wattage of light bulbs versus trying to figure out lumens when they go to the stores. And that's where we came up with the conversion of the charts that were, that were provided. Because it does say for like a 75-watt bulb, that's 900 lumens.
Depends on the manufacturer too, but all packaging does have both lumens and wattage.
So. We probably should have included Alan sooner.
But, but that was, that was the purpose as to why, as to why it's, it said that in the ordinance. And we looked at all the other ordinances that other municipalities had and it seemed easier to understand for, for homeowners.
Well, as I say, with the advent of, of LEDs now, you can get some super bright bulbs for 15 watts and very high lumen output, more than 100-watt light bulb. So that's why I'd be opposed to using wattage first of all.
Okay, so that's the first reading. And, uh, we'll get back to you, uh, if there's any changes to the ordinance before we get to the next meeting. And then I guess I will have to ask the city attorney whether we need to do another first reading at that time. Okay?
Okay.
All right, let's move on. We have another ordinance. This is, uh, ordinance 1221. This is ordinance twelve twenty-one, an ordinance amending official traffic map of the city of Opaaca and changing its sign. This is also first reading, and we're going to go to Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. So my memo that I included is on page two of the packet, followed by the actual ordinance, again, first reading. And then following that is plan sheets from the Main Street project, because this is where it pertains. With Main Street, we had a few changes that have been described here in the past. Signage is being updated. We have, within our code, we have to maintain an official street map, which includes signs. The most important ones are, of course, stop signs and speed limit signs. Main Street, we, the changes that, that have, are occurring, Granite Street slash Cooper Water and Main went from a two-way to a four-way. Chief Hozell already mentioned that earlier tonight, so the map needs to be updated to show not just two signs, but four. Session Street became a one-way. That was approved here in the past recently. But with that, we added an additional stop sign as you are heading eastbound on Session, and then, of course, the do not enter signs if you wanted to turn westbound into the wrong way. Fulton in Main changed from a signalized intersection or to a four-way, or will be when it's finished. When the signals were taken down on Royalton and Churchill, the map showed traffic signals. Here it did again, or does. This is a similar change where we are updating the map to remove the signalized portion with, that's shown on the map and include four stop signs. Badger in Main Intersection will be changed from a signalized to a four-way stop. And then I just included a note that Union Street along the Main Street corridor has no changes. The ordinance is included and written. This is how they typically were, look. I've done a few of these and have gone off of just past examples. The, as I noted, the plans are shown. I highlighted the signs. The ones that are highlighted in, let's see here, in pink are new signs. The ones that are in yellow are already on the official map, and we're, I'm not requesting those to be updated with the ordinance. So this is going to be coming back to another council for review.
All right, so again, first reading, a bunch of second readings at our next meeting. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Justin. Next up, we have license report fifteen forty-six. This is the operator's license or bartender's license renewal. We need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Chestnut, that we approve license report fifteen forty-six. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, scrap dealer's license fifteen forty-seven, there's one individual on there. Again, we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Martin, second by Olson, that we approve license report fifteen forty-seven. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, license report number fifteen forty-eight, this is a taxi cab driver. Again, there's one individual on there. We would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kealan, second by Martin, was it? That we approve license report fifteen forty-eight. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, funny how fast these things go when you see the time. Next, we have issues, project discussion. This has to do with a strategic plan, and it's, it's dealing with the River North subdivision. Aaron, hopefully you can get some good attention out of these ten city council members and staff members, but.
We'd be happy.
I don't want to take this lightly because I really think it's a, a neat concept, and, and we've put a lot of effort into this, and I, I understand that we got a game going on here, and some people don't want to know what the score is, but, but I'll keep track of it, so.
All right, thanks, Mayor. So. Andrew's on, yeah, he joined some time here. So between myself, Andrew, and probably Mayor Smith and Justin, we'll take you through some comments on our process. This is a part of our strategic plan. Our strategic plan mentions really identifying that next neighborhood development, and we entered into a contract with Vandewall and Associates, who really specialize in this type of development and these plans. And we've been working with them over the last few months, and when I say we, I mean myself, Andrew Dane, Mayor Smith, and Justin Barons as a part of our development review team. So I'm going to take you through really what we're going to look at tonight is the final deliverable of that process, and we will answer any questions you have. So. Oh, sorry. So what we're looking at right here is, this would be known as the Business and Technology Park. As council members probably know, this area was kind of identified as, well, not kind of, it was identified as heavy industrial, and the thought was is that some of our, those types of developments would move in here over time. Over the last twenty years, we've seen developments that were more servicing, you could say service neighborhood type developments moved in there. Carousel gymnastics, sunny day childcare, we have a physical therapy office, we have a Fox Valley Technical College. And got to thinking about, hey, we've got this city-owned land approximately seventy-five acres. Is there something we can do to meet a need, which is housing in our community, and is, would that be an okay spot? We have the East Gate subdivision right now, or the formerly CAP Services subdivision, which is, probably has our most momentum right now for housing development. And there is some, we, we wanted to recognize that momentum on the east side, and, and I think the attraction to being close to the Highway Ten corridor, and, and not ignore that by incorporating it into this plan. We also know some of our larger employers are, are, one of the things when we sit down with them is, is housing is a big need for them as well in attracting employees and recruiting employees. So you'll see, in this development, we have a mixture of single-family, twindo, or what you guys would probably recognize as duplex-type developments, townhomes along the northern end, we have commercial business mixed in here, larger multifamily, green space and trails, and I would say that's really the, probably the, the big amenity that, from a community development standpoint, that we like. Some of these connecting trails and this red that runs throughout the whole area that also connects to our existing trails along the Opaaca River here, and then to walking facilities back towards town to the west. Also, some other interesting things you'll see in here is connection to a snowmobile trail that runs east of town, and so on and so forth. So really, I'm going to take this opportunity to, kind of after that setup, to turn it over to Andrew, because I think one of Andrew's real strengths and one of his passions is neighborhood development and revitalizations, and Andrew was instrumental in this. So Andrew, with that being said, why don't you go ahead and, and kind of take over and comment, make any comments you'd like to counsel here?
Okay, I'm getting a little echo. Apologize for that. Can you hear me okay, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm also a big Milwaukee Bucks fan, so I will make it brief. I think you did a really nice job of summarizing this, Aaron, and I, I'm, you know, quite honestly, I'm, I'm really pleased with the conceptual plan that's been put together here, and I think this is really exciting opportunity for the city. I think if you look at the number of units here, and you look out into the future, I think, you know, you have an opportunity to maybe absorb, you know, five to ten years' worth of new residential growth in here. I think the total unit mix, three hundred to four hundred units, you know, could, if you're assuming, you know, two people, two persons per household, you might be looking at, you know, increasing the population of, of the city by significant percentage, which would add, I think, a lot of vibrancy and help address some of the issues, which I know include workforce housing, keeping, providing opportunities for folks to work at the foundry and other places, but then also addressing a need for school, help shore up school enrollment in the school district. So I would, I guess my only comment would be, you know, going forward from here, I think we have some unique opportunities to try to move forward relatively in short order to, to move into this. We've talked about some potential phasing opportunities. I think in the next, in one of the slides, we, we showed one opportunity, a phase one opportunity down there. I think, again, for me, this is pretty conceptual because we're at the point now where I think we could go out to the development community with the package that we put together and start soliciting interest, are already having some conversations with folks. So whether phase one is here or it's in another portion of, of the development, I think the next phase here is kind of engaging with, with a qualified developer, putting together, planning out a portion of this land, looking. Obviously, there's a lot of work to be done in terms of looking at TIF, in terms of looking at infrastructure costs, in terms of doing a cost-benefit analysis to move forward, but I certainly feel like we've got some good momentum here, and excited to, to help bring this to fruition as we move forward. I'll leave it at that.
Mayor and Justin, since you guys were a big part of the process, do you guys have any comments? Go ahead, Justin.
I guess I'll say from a public work standpoint that we have adjacent utilities present there. We can handle the addition of this many households with thinner utilities. The phased approach would definitely help, and is thought out well as far as installing roads and sewer and water mains to make it more cost-effective.
Yeah, I, just a couple of brief things that maybe you guys are thinking about, too, though, you know, we, we talked about residential property, and it wasn't that many years ago that we said, holy cow, we have enough residential lots in our community that will last us a lifetime. And within a year's time, that's not true anymore. So we need to look to expand the idea of residential, and we know that a couple of our major industries in town are saying, hey, we need to have good residential here. So we looked at the, you know, this is really Andrew's concept, Andrew Dane's concept here, and, you know, this is a property that's distressed. We haven't been able to do much there except on the corners, and, and so, and it's got some great hills there, and and we did ask Vandewall, or the ones that put together this, you know, does that make sense to put residential in an area like this? And, and it seems to be the, the wave of the future is, is that that's where people want to live, is near where they work and where there are opportunities for them. So, yeah, it's a great concept. We made some adjustments. As we went through that, we wanted to make sure that, that, you know, the lots were large enough to have three-car garages on some of those lots, because we know that people like to have their toys around here, and we, you know, so we want to make sure they're able to, to. We wanted to make sure that everybody had the opportunity that wanted to, to live in this area, and that there would be housing that would meet all of those needs, and, and it looks like a lot of lots there, and it is a lot of lots, and how long will it take, you know? I just go back and say, hey, five years ago, we thought we had too many, now we don't, so you just, you just don't know. And this is city-owned property, too. I think that's the key to this. You know, we, we own this, so it's not like we have to go out and purchase this property to make this work. So, any other comments? Scott, go ahead.
By taking all this acreage for housing, are we going to limit ourselves in any way to, to, if any big industries want to come in or we want to court them, do we have anything available for them besides this?
That's a wonderful question. I think there are other tools at our disposal if that was the case. I think we, and we've been talking with people in the industrial park and the foundry, and the people that we would expect to maybe push back on taking all of this for residential, and we haven't heard it. They, right now, they said, you know, our needs are people. We need people. Who's going to come and, and add an industrial-type manufacturing, whatever, that needs three hundred employees when we can't, you know, when we still need people? So right now, honestly, we've expected some pushback on that because of exactly the point you just made, Scott, and we have not heard it at all.
And we do have some vacant parcels in the community. I mean, there are, and that is a concern, Scott, but we've been sitting on this probably for twenty years. We haven't seen anything yet.
Priorities, yeah, before we were looking for industry, now we're looking for houses, so maybe this will help us get industry here.
Right, never know. Never know. So Andrew, just repeat again, real quick, what, what the next, what you think the next step is? No, turn your mic on there, buddy.
Was that a, was that a next, was that a question for me, Mayor?
It was. I just wanted you to repeat again what you feel the next step is now that we have this concept.
Sure, I, I got a little broken up there. I think, yeah, so looking forward to the next step here, I think it's a kind of a combination of continuing to work with Kathy, Aaron, yourself, the financial advisors, looking at, you know, potential opportunities as the TIFs are closed and reopened, and what the, what the opportunities are, what the alternatives are in terms of potential, you know, financing to, to assist, you know, likely kind of pay-as-you-go to reduce any risk to the city, but looking financially. I think the other piece is kind of the sort of infrastructure feasibility and kind of cost-benefit analysis, so would be engaging to do some preliminary engineering out here, probably a survey, doing some of that early upfront plating concept, an initial preliminary plat to kind of lay this out, or at least a first phase. And then the third piece of that would be going out to the market. I think we have the potential of going a couple different routes with that. One might be to put together requests for qualifications, similar to, to any other project. But in this case, we'd be looking to engage, you know, one or more developers with an interest in this site. I do think that if we are able to, you know, appropriately market this, we, we know just because we've already fielded interest from several multifamily developers, we, we think there is interest out here, but going out, so those are, I think, are the three pieces, three pieces to look at as a next step.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Any other comments? All right, so that's what we've been working on. You'll see more in the future. All right, anything else, Aaron, under this?
Nope, good to go.
All right, under Communications Recommendations of the Mayor, I just want to, before we adjourn, on August third, which is our next city council meeting, we're going to take a tour of North Main Street during the council meeting, so bring some walking shoes with you. I don't know when we'll do it, if we'll do it right at the beginning of the council meeting, but we will meet here and call the meeting to order at that time, and then, and then we'll probably leave right away and, and take a tour of North Main Street. No, you can't stop at any of the places. We're going to just walk around and come right back, but Roger Hanson has said that the benches will be down. They're going to just put the benches where they think they're going to go, so this will give you the opportunity to voice your opinion on where those benches should actually end up. That's part of the, the walking tour part of that, but I think it'll be kind of cool. Street signs went up today down on North Main Street. Different, you know, they're different than what we have the rest of town, so they look really cool. The planters, if you haven't seen the. The Planters, if you haven't seen the Planters, I, I think it really brightens it up down there, so all of that. And I think there are a couple of homes that are in already, right? Eight that are in?
There's nine.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll get an opportunity to see all of those things. Obviously, there's no lighting.
Poles.
Poles down there, there's no dumpsters down, or garbage cans down there, but otherwise. Anything else for the good of the meeting? The score? Never mind, I won't tell you, Eric. Okay, it's eighteen to eleven, Bucks. Because the vote was, they wanted to.
Yeah.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Hagan, second by Kealan, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.